It is now five thirty-three. It is Thursday, August twentieth. Twenty, twenty? And it is, uh, five thirty-three P M. I call this meeting to order. Did we receive any public comments?
Yes, sir. I'm gonna read a public comment. It would be nice if you could stop doubling the water in Sewerville because people will stop watering their grass. So when someone comes into town for a visit, everyone's yard will look nasty, which puts you in a bad spot because then your own town will look nasty. Plus, it doesn't make sense to charge more sewer because when we water the grass, it doesn't go into the sewer. It goes into the ground. Sincerely, future bill payer, Event Vosges, H N G.
Thank you.
Eight nine?
Yes, sir.
I like that in the ball.
Item C, non-concept. Second public hearing for the proposed twenty-twenty annexation. Who sent it, our? Seth Solms, our city manager?
Mayor Potem and council. Uh, this is the second public hearing for the proposed twenty-twenty annexation. Uh, we're required to have this on an off regular meeting schedule, which means tonight, which is not, are not our regular scheduled meeting on the second and fourth Thursday. So here we are. Um, the first reading of the ordinance will actually be in September, as will the second reading of the ordinance in September. Um, I'll go ahead and start by reading a, uh, a shortened version of the property and then I'm gonna point it out on the map uh, and then, uh, discuss it just a little bit. So this is for the twenty-twenty proposed annexation, which includes approximately a one thousand seven hundred fourteen point seven four acre tract of land being all of sections thirty-six, thirty-eight, thirty-five of block five, H and G N Railroad Company survey Reeves County. A two thousand one hundred forty-six point one seven acre tract containing all of sections twenty, forty-seven, and forty-eight of block five Reeves County, Texas, or H and G N Railroad Company Reeves County, Texas. A one thousand two hundred thirty-one point three oh acre tract of land out of section one, section two, section twelve, section fourteen, section twenty-five of block five of the H and G N Railroad Company survey, and out of section fifty-four, block five of the R H Matthews survey Reeves County, Texas. A two thousand five hundred eighty-one point four six acre tract of land out of block, out of section twenty, thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-eight of block five with the H and G N Railroad survey Reeves County, Texas, and a one hundred thirty-four point two four acre tract of land out of section one, section two, section three of block five of the H and G N Railroad Company survey, and section, uh, one, block six, uh, Reeves County, Texas. And so those areas include out here by the Collie Road and the rest of the, uh, the interchange there. Uh, this continues, uh, in accordance with our, uh, our annexation plan, which pushes us a little bit, uh, further east as well. Uh, and then the majority of it is over here in, uh, what is colloquially become known as the West Pecos area. And this is actually in two different colors because it would be in two different, uh, steps. So we would annex this peak area first, followed by the annexation of the blueout area to the south. You can only extend a certain distance at a time for us based off of our population. The ETJ is one mile, uh, and so we have to kind of, uh, hopscotch it in, in order to do those, uh, multi-step annexations. Um, we have not received any public comments that I'm aware of in written form. We have received a couple of requests for development agreements and we will have those prepared for you, uh, at the first reading. Um, and it'll actually require separate action, uh, as well. Um, but, uh, we have not received any comments for or against, um, in this annexation thus far. Um, and just as a reminder for the development agreements, what that is, is contrary to the name, it means that we're not going to develop. Uh, it means that if the property owner develops, at that point, they will be annexed. If they just leave it as farmland or undeveloped, uh, range land, or even just oil field land, um, they don't have to be annexed if they enter into that agreement with the city. It's only once they start to build, uh, do something vertical or use it for a different use uh, than what is currently being used for, that it then automatically becomes annexed at that point in time.
Is that a, just from the Collie Road area or is that all, all the points?
Uh, I think, uh, I know the ones at the Collie Road, but there may be some on the eastern side there, um, additionally. Um, I don't know of any so far on the, the west two annexations.
I'm on the Collies for, for, you know, by stipulation, maybe?
Yes, we, we did the same thing last year with them. That's correct. Yes, sir. Um, with that, uh, I'll turn it over to the council and to the public for any comments which they may have.
So those properties are mostly, uh, farmland and grazing land?
Almost entirely, yeah.
No, I don't think there's been any such activity like that in years.
Yeah, and I don't even know that there are any houses in any of those areas.
Well, you see, uh, where the houses are in the pink in the park, bottom left, that's three acres. Right there?
Yep.
Where the pink stars and the houses are at, that's, okay, now that avenue goes straight to, kind of, row two oh six. All that is just farmland. There are a little bit of houses, maybe one or two. It's before two oh five, but other than that, there was that triangular shape there, whatever you would call it. There's, there's not.
Well, there's just, there's compressor stations and.
There's one on the char, where you go, coming from the prison, going west, and where it curves, it goes through an interstate. There's a trailer there. I don't think we're, I don't think that's part of the plan.
Uh, not this year. That was part of last year's. Um, and they did not opt in to the building, yeah.
He doesn't see, he opened the door, so I just.
Yeah, it.
Open the public hearing.
I mean, we need to open it to public hearing and official comments.
They'll open it now for public hearing? In light of the audience? We'll close it now. We'll close the opening. Now, uh, seat two. Utility workshop. Discuss utilities, water sewer rates, water project, and other utility related items. Now, Mr. Howley, Lizzy, Assistant City Manager.
Mayor, Council, Howley Lizzy, Assistant City Manager. Um, if you'll allow me, uh, we have quite a bit to cover tonight and so, um, so that I've got my notebooks and my information should we have to answer questions, I'll make the presentation from here. Um, I will warn you, talking water is something that I love to do. I could, in theory, talk for several hours. I will not. So, uh, this presentation is, is meant to be a, a high-level discussion of our full water and sewer utility and our current conditions that our utility is in and how that relates to the rate structure and the rates uh, that have been used in the recent times. So if you'll go ahead and flip to the second page. Um, when we began talking about sewer rates, we talked about some of these fundamental concepts. So I want to touch on them again so that when you're talking about, uh, a water and sewer utility, it is run like a business, not like a government. Uh, and you often hear on the street, "I wish the government was run more like a business." Well, water and sewer is a great example of when it is run like a business. And so what that means in practicality is that, um, we have to operate in the black. We, we cannot operate at a loss. So revenues have to exceed expenditures in order for us to continue to stay in operation. One of the differences between our business and a private sector business is there are no profits that we're returning to stakeholders. Um, if, if we have excess revenues, that is all invested back into the infrastructure of the utility. The other point is that in our business, what we're in the business of doing is providing a critical public health service. Uh, the community cannot survive and maintain health without water. Uh, it has to be treated water to all federal and state standards to be considered potable or usable by the public. Um, and we also have to then receive the wastewater's back from the public and treat those to meet all federal and state standards. So it is a critical public health service and it is incredibly expensive in terms of the capital needs. There are very few things that a municipality will do that are more expensive than water and sewer. And we'll talk through some of that as we go. Uh, the other piece that, where we act like a business is that we have to be mindful of risk mitigation. And what that means is what are the risks to the public from failure from our utility or systems within our, uh, utility? If those systems fail, what is the risk to the public? And we have to be mindful that we're always mitigating those risks. We can't afford to allow those things to fail because it immediately impacts the health and the viability of the community. And so there are some businesses out there, uh, they can run at a profit and then when things fail, they just close and go somewhere else. We don't have that option. So we run like a business, but we also kind of get backed into a corner that this is a critical health need for the community. Another point that we make for utility fundamentals is that customers that use the service pay for the service. And this is very different than what most people think of in terms of property taxes. For example, the school taxes that the community pays, you may or may not have children in school, but you still pay property taxes to support that school operation. Well, for our utility services, only the people that use the service pay for the service. So you can have property that does not have a water account and you don't pay water services. Uh, so only those customers that use the service pay for the service. And how much you pay is determined by how much you use. And so that leads to the third bullet point there is that customers that cause the expense should pay for the expense. What we're talking about there is, and Councilor Orona probably will understand some of this concept because it's similar in electrical utility. Locations and properties that place a large demand on our utility system should have to pay an equitable cost from the demand they put on the system. So if we have an industrial customer that uses large volumes of water, they should be paying more than grandma who has a very small demand that she places on our system. So the rates that are established and the structures that we use are intended to equitably spread the costs so that the people that use it and place the demand on the system pay a proportional share of the cost of running that system. So that speaks to the concept of how we establish rates. And finally, the fourth point is that we don't like subsidies. Uh, there are some businesses, there are even some municipalities that will artificially keep the cost to businesses low in order to promote business or be business friendly. But when you do that, that means that the residential customers are subsidizing the commercial class customers. And so you really don't want to set up a rate structure in which one class of customer is subsidizing the uses of another class of customer. You can also get in trouble if you're not careful so that the average small residential customer could be subsidizing the high-volume residential customer depending on how you set up your rates. And so again, we have a family that's using a large volume of water. One, they're putting the demand on the system and we have to have water to supply that demand. And two, they are using a higher volume than, say, a senior couple that are on fixed income. So we won't want the senior income on a fixed income to subsidize the high users. So the rate structure should be established so that the high users pay their fair share of the water they use and the demand they place on the system. So those are some fundamental concepts that you have to think through when you're talking about how to operate a utility and especially how to establish rates for that service. Next page, quick outline. I, I promise again, I'll go through this quickly. Uh, I recognize that I could talk for a really long time about this. But we're gonna spend a little bit of time talking about the operations of our utility. So that's gonna include water supply, where do we get our water from? Water treatment, what do we do to it to make it safe to drink? Water distribution, how do we move it around town to your tap and to your faucet? Then we'll talk briefly about wastewater collection and how we receive those wastewater flows. Wastewater treatment, how do we treat those to meet federal and state standards? And then reclaimed water, what do we do with the water that's left over after that process? Then we'll close by talking about some of the financial issues and specifically how it impacts our water and sewer rates. So that's where we're gonna go. All right. This is the only slide that I gave myself to be a nerd. Uh, Mr. Sorensen is an engineer and he, he loves to talk about streets and transportation because that's his background. I geek out over water, um, and so this is the only slide I gave myself to quote-unquote be a nerd. And I do it to talk about the importance of water and the value that water has for our health and our well-being. And so if you look at any space operation, whether it's telescopes looking out into the universe or even the rovers we're sending to Mars, in almost every case, they're looking for water. If they want to determine whether a planet or an object in space can support life, the first question they ask is, does that planet or does that object have water or have the ability to develop water? Because if it doesn't, there is no life that is going to be sustained on that planet or in that object out in space. And that speaks to the incredible importance that water plays in the ability to have and sustain life. And that goes from planets in the universe all the way to communities in Texas. Water is incredibly critical for the life of a community or a life of, huh, any organism, all right? So seventy-one percent of the earth is covered in water. So it's very easy for people to assume that water is plentiful and water is everywhere. Because seventy-one percent of the earth is covered in water. However, ninety-six point five percent of that water is saltwater and is not fit for public consumption. It can be treated. You can take saltwater and treat it to become drinking water, but it is incredibly labor-intensive. It is incredibly expensive from terms of electricity and chemicals and processes. It's very hard to take saltwater, turn it into drinking water. And ninety-six point five percent of all the water on the planet is saltwater. So that means three point five percent of the water on our planet is fresh water. Of that three point five percent of water, sixty-eight point seven percent of that water is frozen in the ice caps and in the glaciers. So three and a half percent of the water on the planet can be used and almost seventy percent of that water is frozen in the ice caps and the glaciers, effectively not available for us. So of the remaining fresh water, thirty percent is actually under the ground and barely a quarter of a percent of the fresh water on the planet is found in lakes and streams. And so, yes, there is a tremendous amount of water on our planet, but a very small portion of that water is available as fresh water for humans to consume. And so water is honestly very scarce when you think about how much is there and what's available for our consumption. So for our community, we currently get all of our water from groundwater. So the next couple of charts is gonna look at, uh, the primary wellfields where Pecos gets its water from. Um, Jesus, can you throw over the Google Earth map just briefly? On this map, uh, Pecos is up in the left-hand corner where all those yellow, uh, tacks are. And so our primary water supply is in the bottom center in what we call the South Worsham wellfield. That's where the vast majority of our water comes from on a daily basis. In the middle of the screen is a small collection of, uh, thumbtacks. That is the North Worsham wellfield. We'll talk about that a little bit. And then way up in the top right-hand corner is a collection of wells that's in Ward County and it's called the Ward County wellfield. So that's where we get our water from. So we have pumps that reach down into the ground like a big straw, suck the water up out of the ground and move it into town for our consumption. So back to the charts on the PowerPoint, um, I quit, Jesus? All right, uh, let me. All right, so. I found records back in the year two thousand where a groundwater assessment was done to evaluate how much water is available in our aquifers where our wells exist. And one of the things that you have to think about when you're talking groundwater is that that volume of water is fixed. The amount of water that's in the ground is all the water that's there. If you operate with a lake or a river, every time it rains, it replenishes and put more water in there. Well, groundwater recharges very, very slowly. So if you go to Sonic and order a Coke and you put a straw in there and you drink out of one side of the cup, the whole cup drops. If you get a slush and put a straw in one side of the cup and start drinking, at some point, you're only gonna be drinking out of that side of the cup. So groundwater does not restore as fast as lake water does. So what these next couple of charts is gonna show is what is happening to the water supplies in our wellfields from two thousand to now twenty-twenty. So in two thousand, I'm showing that that's the first record I could find of available water in the aquifer. So that's basically gonna show that it's full. In two thousand nine, they did an update and you can see that the water supply draw down a little bit. Then in twenty-fourteen, they updated the study again and the water supplies had dropped a little bit more. And in the twenty-fourteen water study, they make the statement or have the finding that Pecos, with its current water demands, has forty years' worth of water in our existing water supplies. Forty years, assuming our current population and our current demands. The next chart is the same thing, just stated as a percentage. And so effectively, from two thousand to two thousand and fourteen, we dropped about ten or eleven percent of our water. So in a fourteen-year period, we dropped about ten percent of our water supplies was used. We are wrapping up the current update for twenty-twenty. These numbers are pending because the report hasn't been completed. Covid hit and the engineers couldn't travel back out here, so they have a few more things to do to finish the report. But the preliminary findings are that our water supplies have dropped rapidly in the last five years. Speaking of percentages, at twenty-fourteen, we had lost about ten percent of our supply. Five, six years later, uh, we are down to eighty percent of our supplies. So we went from ten percent to eight, uh, twenty percent loss in about five or six years. And that's because two factors. Population of Pecos is growing and our water demands are significantly higher than they were five years ago. Additionally, you have oil field production that is also poking straws down into the ground and sucking water out of the aquifers on their own. And so the water they pull out of the ground is impacting the supplies that are available in our aquifers. And so the moral of the story here is that from two thousand to two thousand and twenty, we have lost approximately twenty percent of the water available to us in our groundwater supplies. If we stop growing today, the rate that we're withdrawing water will level off, but will continue to drop probably one to two percent a year in our aquifer. If population continues to grow, this is gonna accelerate and the study's not finished yet and the finished report will tell us how many years of water we have left. In twenty-fourteen, if everything stays the same, there is no growth and there is no new demand, we had forty years of water. I can promise you, five or six years later, we do not have forty years' worth of water left in the ground. And so we're going to have to begin to look at what is the long-range projection for our community and where are we gonna get our water from? Last thing I'll say about this chart, well, it comes as part of the next couple of slides. Um, water conservation program, right now, the city does not have an effective water conservation program. I want to say that again. We do not have an effective water conservation program. The state requires that a plan be submitted and Pecos has always submitted a document to the state. But Pecos has never done what the document says when they submit it to the state. So what you find then is the public at large does not think about water with a water conservation mentality. They think water is plentiful, we can use as much water as we want to, and water should be cheap. And that is the mentality that the majority of the public's going to have. Plenty of water, we can use as much as we want, and it should be cheap. But when you start looking at the context of how much do we have available and how fast that water is disappearing, you have to change your mindset of how you view the value of water and the importance of how well you can serve the water. And so one of the things we're gonna have to do moving forward is begin to develop a water conservation mentality within the members of our community. Or that twenty percent loss will very quickly be thirty percent loss, will very quickly be thirty-five or forty percent loss, and then we're scrambling to try to find water in order to survive as a community.
But if we, even if we do that, uh, conservation program here in town, you mentioned that old field people are good, are plugging in their straws using your analogy.
Yes, sir.
And pulling water out. How are we gonna, how are we gonna control them?
The only op, we can't, we have no options to, to manage that. But the county did vote to create a groundwater conservation district and that conservation district is beginning to get established. They have tools so that as new wells are developed, there are forecast models that will say this aquifer in fifty years needs to have X number of gallons in it. And for new wells that are created, they limit how much you can produce from that well to protect the aquifer for that future need that's out there.
Because the water they pump up is not, would it be considered good drinking water or good potable water?
It, well, when it comes out of the ground, it's not potable.
Yeah, no.
But it depends on which part of the aquifer they go to. So for example, of our three wellfields, South Worsham is an amazing quality of water. It comes out of the ground, we disinfect it and we serve it, and it meets all federal and state standards. It's an incredible quality of water and that is the aquifer that is dropping rapidly right now. In the North Worsham field, half of the wells produce okay water. The other half, you can't touch it. The water quality is horrible and we have no way to treat it. Out in Ward County, those wellfields, it's a very salty water and so we have to blend it with the South Worsham water to make sure that we have quality water that we provide to our citizens.
When I was in Fort Stockton, we had that issue. We had a battle with Peyton Williams on the water.
Yeah.
And we did a study, that aquifer is at the Edwards Aquifer, in that area, and it almost extends to flat-top farms.
Yeah.
And I know the city of Fort Stockton has some land. I think they were talking about, well, we could all, city of Fort Stockton always drill wells there and pump it that way.
Well, one of the things that's happening right now, um, and, uh, it's probably on one of my coming slides, but in the state water plan, the state of Texas as a state manages water available for the public. but in the state water plan, the state of Texas as a state manages water available for the public. And every five years, they produce a 50-year forecast. And in that state water plan, they look at every county. And every county in the state of Texas has a 50-year projection of whether they have enough water for the people in that county for the next 50 years. And Pecos has never participated in the state water plan. We've talked about that before. We are now in the state water plan and we have long-term water strategies for our community that's never existed in the state water plan. And because that happens, we have access to funding to pay for this stuff in the future when it becomes a need. So being in the plan gets you access to funding. Pecos has never participated in the plan. Well, if you look at the plan specifically for Reeves County, but more importantly, Pecos County where Fort Stockton is, their 50-year plan for that county shows a huge abundance of water. So Midland, San Angelo, and Abilene, those three communities have partnered and they have begun to buy water and water rights out of that county for their 50-year needs. Because their 50-year needs show a huge need for additional water and they're all coming out here to get it.
It's Midland, Abilene.
And San Angelo. Those three communities have a formal partnership to acquire water.
And Fort Worth is on the land around here so that they can have the water they want.
So 20 years from now, 30 years from now, we're not going to be the only ones looking to get water out of the ground. Midland, San Angelo, and Abilene are also going to be pulling water out of these aquifers 30 years from now. And we have to keep that in the back of our minds so that we start getting in line and acquiring water rights now rather than waiting until it's too late.
At the time that we were, the occasion with Peyton Williams, he had made the statement that he was not the first to drill the water, but he was going to be the first to sell water.
Yeah.
And it was going to be a big commodity, and he chose to be it.
Well, and the state of Texas, and again, this is a little bit of a rabbit trail, so I won't spend much time here. But the state of Texas technically owns all surface water. So if the water's on top of the ground, the state of Texas owns that water. And you have to get permission from them to use that water. Water in the ground is right of capture for the property owners who own the land. So if you own the land and have the mineral rights, that's your water. And that created some of the problems that you had with Mr. Williams and then even the guy up in Oklahoma that was draining the Ovaala Aquifer. Is that they can capture it and then they can sell it to whoever they want to. Doesn't mind the consequences from 50 years from now, they can pull it out and sell it today. And so that creates long-term impacts to the viability of our communities if we don't think today about how we're going to handle water 30, 40, 50 years out into the future. And so that is a major piece of the conversation that we have to be talking about. Even when we talk about how we use water today and frankly, how much we charge for the water that we use today. We have to be thinking about that because if we stick a straw in the ground and we just start sucking out of that Sonic cup as fast as we want to, then it's going to be insanely expensive for this community 10, 20, 30 years from now. And we'll talk about what some of those cost figures should be.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Those wells that we have from the South Worsom, the Ward, is that the city's property?
City, yes.
So we don't have to sell it?
It's our property, we have the water rights, we have the right to capture it.
So we don't, we don't have to sell it to anybody? So what about this, the people that are drilling, you know, the drilling wells? Are they drilling within our field?
No.
But the aquifer just?
And, and we don't pull out of the Edwards Aquifer like Stockton does. We actually come out of the Pecos Valley Aquifer and strings up the Pecos Valley Aquifer. But another common mistake when you're thinking about an aquifer is it's not a lake. In my last community, we didn't have any groundwater, everything was lakes and surface water. And so we'd put our pumps on the west side of the lake and you'd suck out of the straw and the whole lake goes down. Well, in an aquifer, we drill and put our straw in the ground here two miles, five miles, 10 miles away, it's the same aquifer, but we're not getting their water because it's in the ground. And so if we're not careful, we'll suck so much so fast that we'll completely drain this area. There's still water over there, but it doesn't flow quickly. It moves very slow when it's in the ground. And so if we over suck the water out of our area, you can end up with a dry hole and someone three miles away has water. So you have to be mindful of how you manage your well locations and how fast you pull the water out. And one of the things that's happening to us right now is that when these wells were created, you have the horsepower and the size of the pump and that controls how far down the straw can go and how much you can suck up through the straw. And so in 2000, 2001, when the South Worsom Field was put in, the water level was high enough that they used relatively small pumps and a relatively small straw. Well, now we're beginning to have some of our wells at South Worsom go dry. What that means is the straw isn't deep enough and so the water level has dropped below our straw. So now the pump is just sucking air. So we got to put a longer straw in the ground to get deeper where the water is. Well, the deeper you go, the stronger the pump you've got to have up on top of the ground. And so our pumps have not been replaced since South Worsom was built in 2000, 2001. None of our straws have been maintained since South Worsom was put in. And so we're at the stage right now where our wells are starting to go dry because they're not deep enough. And so we're going to have to begin to extend deeper and put larger pumps on top of the ground just to keep up with water demand.
What's, what's the shovel's well that we got?
Most of our wells right now are around 160, 175. And they all have the potential to go 400 to 500 feet. So we can go deeper, but we have to go rework the wells to get them deeper and put larger pumps on the top.
If we do that, would it be more feasible to run down? Instead of sucking the straw down and then having to replace pump it?
What you've got to look at is primarily energy demands. The most energy, it's not efficient, the biggest energy hog for a municipality is water.
Yeah.
And we use tremendous amounts of energy and electricity. And getting a larger pump uses exponentially more energy. And so if, if we drop all the way to the bottom now and we technically don't have to, so for the next five, 10 years, we're going to be paying significantly more electricity than we should have to. So you try to go down enough to limit your energy and electricity usage and then over time, keep going down so that you don't have all of that expense upfront.
So that's why every time you go down, you got to go down.
And so that's why every five years, we update the groundwater assessment to see where we're at and what we need to do with our pumps. So to wrap that conversation up, our supply is limited. It's not like it's going to rain tomorrow and fill us up. Our supply is decreasing and the rate of decrease is increasing because we're using more water than we did five years ago. And if we continue to grow at the rate Pecos has been growing, we will have to find more water supplies. We, we have to. Some of our options is we can optimize our existing infrastructure. That's where we're talking about pumps and straws to make sure that we're efficiently moving water out of the ground. We have to begin to implement a water conservation program that is effective. It takes time. When the city of Abilene began their water conservation program, 1998, their population was around 80,000 people. And their peak day was nine billion gallons of water, or their peak year, was nine billion gallons of water for that year in 1998 with 80,000 people. And that's when they decided they have to start thinking about water conservation. Fast forward to 2011, when the last drought record hit, the Abilene population was approximately 120,000 and they used 7.5 billion gallons of water. So they had almost 40,000 more people in population and they used a billion and a half gallons less of water in that year. And they were comparable drought years. And the difference was water conservation and pricing. Those were the only two things that were different from 1998 to 2011. It was water conservation and pricing. And so water conservation works, but it takes time. You can't tomorrow change the way people think about water. You've just got to start now and it changes habits over time. So we've got to implement a water conservation plan. We also have to start looking for new sources of water, which we have done. We have identified, we've talked about it, there is an additional wellfield down on the south end of the county. Right now, it's owned by Madera Valley Water Supply. They don't produce that wellfield very much right now because it's not economical for them. So we've started talking to them about partnering with them to develop that wellfield. First initial cost to get that wellfield online so that water can come to Pecos is $30 million. You've got to put $30 million on the table to start talking about developing that wellfield. Water is one of the most expensive things that a community will ever do. We need to start looking at the development of a water treatment plant. I'll talk a little bit more of that in a coming slide. We have to start talking about how we recycle our wastewater and beneficially reuse that water. I am not, I want to very clearly say so that all the public knows, I am not talking about drinking that water. Talking about getting that water so that it can be used for landscape irrigation and non-potable needs. Because, for example, last week, Paul, Commissioner Hennehaus was here talking about the golf course. They need a million two to a million four gallons a day to water the golf course. Right now, our average daily water demand for the community is 4 million gallons a day. Right now, I can produce 6 million gallons a day. That's all I can produce right now because of the trouble our wellfields and our pumps are in. Last summer, our peak day was 6 million gallons. So last summer, we barely had the production capacity to treat the water that this community needed. And that was without a million and two gallons a day for the golf course. So we can't give them drinking water except for very short-term emergency situations. And that's what we were proposing to you last week. Is that for very short-term solution, we can provide drinking water for a short period of time. But if my max production right now is 6 million gallons a day and our community demand is 6 million gallons a day, I don't have any more water to give them. But I've got a million to a million two gallons a day right now coming out of the wastewater plant. That is a beneficial source of water that can be used for irrigation. We've talked about it, quality's not right right now. That's why we're investing money into that plant and I'm way ahead of myself. If we don't do these things, we limit the growth potential of our community. So we have to be doing things for our water supply.
Not, not only do we limit our growth opportunity, but if we're unable or unwilling to take on some of these other avenues to develop more water, then we are deciding not to grow.
Right now, I guess, everything that you've shown us is very educational, very good, very eye-opening. But what can we do now to help the citizens? Because we've been, I've been inundated with phone calls, you know, people having water bills of $126, over $400. You know, mine was, and I'll say it's just not tough because last month I used City Water to see how it would turn out.
Yeah.
And I've heard of other people having 160, 180. You know, and it's, 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 it's a big range, it's, it's an influx. Nothing is consistent as far as the pricing. And so I guess right now, me at this point in time is, that's my main concern is water, are we going to be able to?
Yes, sir. And we'll, we cover some of that kind of at the tail end of this conversation, hopefully. I'll speed up a little bit because we've hit some of these points already. We do not currently have a water treatment plant. So what that means is when you have a water treatment plant, there is a facility that takes that raw water, takes it through usually a chemical and filtered treatment process to produce potable drinking water. We don't have to have a plant right now because South Worsom is so good, we don't need it. That's a huge blessing for our community right now. But that also means that we're not using North Worsom and we're not using much of Ward County because we don't have a treatment plant. We have to blend it with targeted ratios so that the raw water that goes through treatment is still acceptable for the public. And because of that limitation, we can produce 6 million gallons a day. If we didn't have to blend, we could produce eight to 12 million gallons a day of water with our current wellfields. Remember doing that, it's going to suck them down faster. But we could produce eight, 10, 12 million gallons a day if we had a water treatment plant. We don't have a plant, so we have to blend, so we can only produce right now 6 million gallons a day. If we want to build a water treatment plant that is six to eight million gallons a day of treatment, you've got to bring at least $60 million to the table. You're not going to get a water treatment plant that this area needs for the kind of water we pull out of the ground for less than $60 million.
And Fort Stockton's got two, one on the hill and one at the, at the warehouse.
I, I hate, I hate to keep using Abilene as a reference, but in 2001, we built a reverse osmosis water treatment plant that could treat up to 12 million gallons a day for $60 million. And that was in 2001. We will need a reverse osmosis plant. The good news is technology of the day is much better and much cheaper than it was in 2001. But you still have got other cost inflation and factors that have happened over the last 20 years.
Yes, something very quick. The lines that come from Ward and from the North Worsom Field, where do they tie in to the South Worsom Field?
Go back to that Google Earth map. You can see in the middle of the screen where all of those blue lines connect.
Yes, sir.
Out on 1450, that is our blending tanks. So there's some, some, some big metal tanks on the side of the road of 1450.
Yeah.
All of our wellfields connect there and that's where the water gets blended and where we control the ratios. So that we know how much is South Worsom, how much is North Worsom, how much is Ward, so that we can get the blending ratios correct and then bring it into town to be treated.
And that's just my idea, that I was thinking, okay, well, if, if North Worsom Field and Ward County lines go straight into Pecos, we could maybe tap a line into it to give the off-the-watering.
Yeah. From the blending tank into town, you see two lines. The one on top's kind of straight in.
Uh huh.
That is an old abandoned line that is not used and has failed in multiple locations. It would, you'd have to replace that entire line to use it.
Is that a poly line, steel line?
I think it's a concrete line.
Concrete?
I think it's a concrete line.
How big?
24-inch.
24-inch. Would it be feasible to, to line it with like poly? You know, like a 20-inch inside, a 24-inch, you know, just to, I mean, that's a lot of entry.
Yeah. You could, but the...
It would have limitations.
It would have limitations on it and then you'd still have water losses through that.
But like what Councilman Lloron is saying, to, to provide it for like for the golf course in an emergency without having to use the South Worsom?
Yeah.
Is the Ward Field worse water than North Worsom?
North is the worst water. And so it, it has the least usability as the North Worsom Field. Ward is slightly better than the North Worsom. South Worsom is incredibly good water. So scroll back towards town, Jesus. The line on the bottom that comes over, it follows 1450 and then at 1450, it runs up 285 into town. That is a new 24-inch water line, it's in good shape. In theory, you could connect somewhere on 285, bring the line across over to the golf course and provide them raw water. In, in theory, that could be done. I, I think I've got a better solution that we can talk about a little bit later that involves effluent from our wastewater plant.
Okay.
Alright, but the last thing I want to say about water treatment is that at the city yard on Wallfall is where our high-service pump station is. We just had a condition assessment done of our high-service pump station. It is a high risk for failure. It is a high risk for failure. Uh, the pumps have not been replaced in a number of years. Uh, we recently replaced the electrical systems. So, the electrical systems are good, but the pumps are very old, and it actually has a high risk for failure. If that pump station fails, our entire community goes dry, and we have no way to push water into their, to our systems. So, we're going to have to look at our high-service pump station in the very near future.
Before we move on.
Yes, sir.
This water treatment, did we hear a few meetings back talk about taking care of what we, uh, the filter system on the, uh...
The wastewater treatment?
Yeah, the wastewater.
Yes.
That was going to produce water to the, uh, to that holding tank by the park.
Yes.
That's something in the works right now.
It's under design right now, will probably be under construction in twenty twenty-one and be online in twenty twenty-one.
Because that, that would help put that, uh, quality water for...
That would solve, that would solve the golf course's issues.
Even as you're part of the, you do the water as a part.
That's right. Yeah. All right. Water distribution, um, again, I could probably spend an hour on every one of these slides. Uh, we have approximately one hundred miles of water line buried, uh, within the city and just outside the city limits. The challenge is thirty percent of those lines are smaller than six inches in diameter. When you have a line smaller than six inches, that line does not provide adequate fire flows or fire pressure. So, that means we have portions of our community that are not afforded adequate fire protection right now. Um, we have a volunteer fire department that does the best they can. But even once the E S D creates their career fire department, and we have full-time firefighters with very nice firefighting equipment, we have areas of town right now that do not have adequate fire flows. There may be a fire hydrant there. Some of our fire hydrants are connected to a four-inch line or a three-inch line, and you will not get fire flows out of that fire hydrant.
How old are these lines, do we know?
We don't know ages right now.
We don't know how long they've been there, but they're probably old.
I think except for in recent history, pretty much any new water line was a direct result of a grant. And, um, that and the, the bonds that were taken out in the last five years really does not account for a very high percentage of our, our system. It's a very small percentage of our overall system that's been placed in recent years.
So, we're going to have a plan to start updating?
Yes, we're, we're wrapping up the master plan right now. That master planning process will complete in early twenty twenty-one, and it will map out what we need to do over the next five to fifteen years to correct these problems.
You know, one of, one of the things that, uh, you know, just thinking about all this and here, here in the last four, five years, you know, all this money that was coming in, this was something that we could have, you know, better planned. But you know, we learn from our mistakes. So, hopefully, if that's, if this boom comes back again, we're, we're going to, we're going to have to take care of our, of our infrastructure, for one thing. Uh, you know, I, I experienced, uh, the sewer problems. You know, I bought the house that, that I live right now, and I had to do the, because I had, uh, uh, what do you call that?
Clay pipe.
Clay.
Clay or orange bird, yeah, orange bird.
And then, when they, when I was going to connect it to the city pipe, and they opened it up, it was all collapsed.
Yeah.
So, uh, we can, I can just imagine what the water lines would look like.
Well, and when you have old water lines, um, have you ever seen pictures of someone's arteries that have hardened?
Yeah.
No.
Water lines do the same thing over time.
Oh, yeah.
Especially if they're cast iron. But water lines, over the years, begin to calcify in the inside. And so, a six-inch water line in the nineteen fifties is not a six-inch water line today. Um, and so...
I changed a one-inch inlet water line, you know, that's, to, to my house. Uh, and it wasn't one-inch anymore. I could barely see through it because of all the deposit, but it was a, a gallon inch.
Yeah. Well, the last point here is that in these areas of town where the water lines are too small, it limits future development. And so, we routinely run into, especially on the east side of town, people will have a lot, and they want to bring in a house, or they want to bring in a trailer, and there's no water line there. And the closest water line is a two-inch line that we have to extend down to them. There is a chance they're not going to get the kind of water pressure they need, because the line is too small, and it's too small all the way back to somewhere else. So, it's limiting how much we can develop our community, because these water lines are too small, and it needs to be addressed. Uh, finally, we routinely run into problems where our water valves, um, if you've designed your system well, you're going to have valves where you can turn off and isolate sections to do maintenance or repair leaks. Most of the water leaks we repair are called a hot fix, because that water line is still pressurized, and that water is blowing in their face while they're trying to fix that leak. The other danger that poses then is, if you don't slope that trench correctly, that spraying water is going to destabilize, and that trench could collapse on your guys. So, a hot fix is a dangerous way to fix water leaks. And most of our water leaks are fixed as a hot leak, because we don't have the valves that are there or haven't been used, and they can't shut the water off to get in the hole. And so, uh, our distribution system and the valves, uh, are in need of love and care.
On the valves that we have, do you have a schedule of, you know, just operating them, closing them up?
One of the, one of the things we did through the budget cuts, uh, going into the next budget year, uh, if you'll remember, there were positions in the general fund that were being eliminated. We took two of those positions, and rather than have those people lose their job, I transferred them to the water department to create a valve crew specifically to begin to go through and find our valves and exercise them, so that we can start making improvements in this area. So, we were able to save two people's jobs by repurposing them specifically to work on our valves. Wastewater collection, we have about seventy-three miles of sewer line buried in the ground. We have fourteen lift stations, which, if you think about, I won't use the vernacular, but sewer does not flow uphill, it flows downhill. And so, everywhere we have a sewer collection line, it has to slope down. And so, these fourteen lift stations serve as a big bucket or a cup, that all the sewer flows down into those lift stations. Then there's a pump that pushes it from there out to our treatment plant. So, we have fourteen lift stations, only two of those right now have generators. So, when the power goes down, that lift station stops working. Right now, there's enough capacity so that it keeps flowing and keeps filling up until the power is restored. But if you get into a condition where that lift station's already full, then the power goes down, then it will start backing up into those mains, and that means it starts backing up into those houses. And so, our lift stations really need either generators located there, or they need to be wired so that we can haul in a generator, hook it up, and turn it on. Twelve of our fourteen lift stations aren't even wired to receive a generator that's rolled up on a trailer. Four of our current lift stations are at risk or have already failed, and three of our lift stations are at a high risk for failure. So, seven of our fourteen lift stations are at failure or at risk of failure right now. We replace, we're replacing one lift station this year. We're on schedule to replace one or two lift stations next year. On the low end, it's six hundred thousand dollars to replace a lift station.
Are we, are we building them, rebuilding them to have external source connections to term four generator?
Yes, sir. Uh, the other problem in wastewater collection is many of the lines are too shallow for additional development. And so, the end of the line may be two feet deep, and just further down the street is an empty lot that they want to build a house on. Or, in our case, they've built hotels. And the sewer line was too shallow, so they had to put a lift station in just for the hotel, because our service lines were too shallow. Some of that is because of the water table. If you go very much over than that, you get water everywhere, but, um, and then finally, the major trunk lines. So, if you will, the major big lines, sixteen, twenty-four-inch lines that take all of the sewer from town and move it out to the plant, those lines are at capacity today.
How many, how many are there yet? How many front lines?
Three or four?
Two or four.
Yeah. The one coming from the prison, from the prison all the way through town, it goes through the Stafford lift station, it's at Stafford, just down from Alsop's. That line stays at capacity?
All the time.
All the time. Um, then from kind of two eighty-five headed east to the plant, the trunk lines that go out to the plant, they're at capacity right now. So, if the community continues to grow, we can't send it through those current trunk lines. We'll have to lay new trunk lines around the edges of town to get there, or cut a trench through town and upside those lines, which would be very destructive.
Um, solar system kind of generate battery power for these lift stations?
That...
Is that avenue or?
That can be done, uh, if you have enough batteries to store the power for when it's needed. Uh, what we've found to be more cost-effective is to have some generators on a trailer, and just wheel them over there, wire them up, and do it while it's needed.
No.
Uh, that seems to be more cost-effective than the batteries you would need to store the power for when that event happens.
Is that, just like you, go back to Fort Stotz, and we're there with, at the chamber, at the office.
Yeah.
We, when out there, we install a solar and wind generator.
Yeah.
For pushing back power back into the system.
We've had a lot of conversations recently about the wastewater treatment plant, so I won't spend too much time there, because we're already making some of the necessary improvements. But our current plant is rated for one point six million gallons a day. Right now, our peak day routinely exceeds one point six million gallons. Uh, the effluent that is produced, that's the water that comes out of the treatment plant, right now does not meet the state quality standards for beneficial reuse. So, we can't really use it right now, because it doesn't meet the right quality standards. But with the work that's going to be done next year, that will solve that problem. Uh, so, we've got design underway to fix the quantity and the quality problems. Uh, phase one construction will happen in twenty twenty-one. If you'll remember, that's about four and a half million dollars worth of construction work. Uh, but phase two, if this community continues to grow, that's when we'll have to build a new treatment plant. That will be an additional forty million dollars. Uh, we're already securing financing for if that happens. But when the oil field fires back up, people are going to start coming back in. At some point, we're going to have to build that new wastewater treatment plant for forty million dollars. And, um, the plus side is the water coming out of that plant can be beneficially reused anywhere in our community, if we can get it there. So, final point is that recharged water. Uh, we have to start thinking about the beneficial reuse of that effluent water. Uh, the permit, as it's written right now, calls for us to release that water into the Pecos River and let it go. I, I do not want to let that water go, because once you put it in the river, it is owned by the state, and it's gone. If we can keep it here and use it here, that's water, we don't have to suck that out of the ground somewhere else. And so, what kind of wastewater treatment plant we build determines whether we can keep the water here and use it, or if we have to let it go. And so, our plan is to be able to reuse it. And we already have the major backbone in place. A number of years ago, the city was, had the wisdom to put a line from the plant over to the pond by the airport. So, that is already in place, it's a new line. So, as we improve the quality of water that's produced, we can bring it back, uh, to the south side of the community and begin to use it along the I twenty, at the golf course and other major water users. So, as fast as I recently can, that is an overview of the utility system and our current condition. Uh, if I had to wrap it up in a, a headline for the newspaper, our utility systems are old, and they need to be upgraded for the aging sections. But our community's growing, so we often have to expand new sections to meet the growth. So, we have to fix the old parts, and we have to build the new parts, and all of that costs money. And so, any questions on the system before we start talking more about the rates?
One, I guess. We need to start. I'm going to say this, um, one or the other is, is, I guess, at the new West Pecos, we've got new development, we want that to develop. But what you're saying about the six-inch lines not being six-inch anymore, you know, we've got to start looking at the ways of improving what's inside city limits right now, the old Pecos, I'll call it the old Pecos.
Yes.
And the new Pecos. Uh, start putting money in our old infrastructure to...
And, and the way West Pecos is designed and intended right now is the developers will pay all of the costs for the utility system that goes into that area of town, so that we can focus on original Pecos. And so, we don't plan to spend money on West Pecos. We're going to spend money on Pecos and let the developers cover their costs.
On that land out there, right quick, and maybe, maybe we'll, we'll have the water rights to that area.
We do not.
We do not.
No, they retained the money, it was sold. Yeah. Um, on, on that note, for as an addendum to that note, even though it's not intended for the city to pay for West Pecos and its utilities, we do still need to focus on a regional solution, uh, especially when it comes to supply water. That, that's why the groundwater conservation district is going to be so crucial as they get up and going. It's why we're already talking to Madera Valley about acquiring new water rights. It's why we need to do conservation plans, is because it's, we, we can't look at ourselves in a bubble, because water is what makes everything out there go. It makes the oil field go, it makes the city go. Without water and without that regional, uh, approach, and, and thinking of it as a truly regional problem that has to be addressed, we're going to find ourselves in trouble. And, and so, even though, you know, funding is going to be separated and this and that, we still have to partner together on how we're going to approach that water and which water.
All right. Moving on to the financial side and the, and the rates side, a couple of points to consider here. We've already said this before, very few of the issues facing our utility are cheap. We, we have a lot to do to get this utility where it needs to be, um, and they are not cheap. And so, we have immediate critical needs right now, that if we don't address them right now, that goes back to that risk mitigation conversation at the very beginning. If we don't do something about the high-service pump station today, this, this year, that is increasing risk to our ability to provide water to this entire community. And there are cash requirements right now to make that happen. And so, the rates that are being charged for water are intended, and as we'll see, yes, it covers our operational needs to just keep everything running, but it also allows us to start addressing these immediate critical needs that are in front of us. We have the ability to pay for these, and so, since I've been here, these rates were adopted before I got here. But we've been able to do projects and pay for projects that were critical, that needed to happen right now, because we have the money, we have the cash to do those immediate projects right now. But the next bullet point is then those short-term, mid-term, and long-term needs. We've got to start thinking with what's called generational equity. And I think this goes to some of your point, Councilman Llorona. If it takes thirty million dollars to bring a new water supply online, that water supply should last us for twenty or thirty or forty years. So, today's citizens should not pay a hundred percent of the cost of that project, because that means the next twenty, thirty years' worth of citizens get a free ride, and we're back to subsidizing. So, when you finance one of those big projects, you look for the grant money, but you also look for debt financing that spreads the cost over the lives of the, life of the asset, so that it's fair, so that today's citizens pay their part of that infrastructure, and in ten years, those citizens pay their fair share of that infrastructure, and twenty years from now, those citizens pay their fair share. And so, you don't want water rates that pay for everything today. So, we will have a financing plan for these short-term, mid-term, and long-term issues that is equitable to today's rate payers and those citizens ten, twenty years from now. But we have critical needs that we have to meet today, that we have to fund today, and... And as of right now, there are no grant programs that you can sign up today and have money in thirty days. Grants that we're pursuing today, you're not going to see that money for a year or a year and a half. So if you want grants, it has to be in mind that that money's not showing up until at some point in the future. And we've got things we have to fix right now or everything falls apart. And so we either have to cash finance or we have to debt finance. And so that's part of the financing plan that we develop, is how we move through this. We have a strong cash position right now. I'm not here telling you that this utility's falling apart and we have no money. We have a strong cash position right now that is allowing us to fix these problems that are critical. Last summer, we almost ran out of water because we could only produce six million gallons, and this community needed six million gallons. This summer, we were ahead of the game and we met all of the needs that this community has with some room left over because we took the action we needed to make to fix the problems that put us there in the first place. We couldn't do that if we didn't have a strong cash position. And, and so I, I understand that we want to keep costs low to help our citizens. I agree. But we also have to have the ability to fix the critical issues that are in front of us today. And so follow me for just a little bit longer. Utility funds should only be used to support utility operations and capital needs. I will tell you, in the past, fortunately, it was before Mr. Sorensen, this community used the water fund to pay for other things that had absolutely nothing to do with water. And so what that meant was they were taking money from water and sewer customers, and they were paying for things that had absolutely nothing to do with water and sewer. You can't do that. That's not sound business practices. We don't do that. And Seth and I will probably be pretty adamant, we're, we're going to fight if somebody asks us to because using these funds to pay for non-utility issues hurts our ability to fix all the problems we just talked about. So we have cash, but we don't need to use it for other issues within the community or within the city organization because we have enough to deal with just within the utility. All right. So when you're looking at how to set water rates, what do we charge for the water that customers are drinking? We have to look at our revenue requirements. How much revenue do we need to bring in to cover operating costs? That's to pay the people, that's to buy the chemicals, that's to keep the water flowing through pumps. What does it take to operate this utility right now? Where most municipalities fail is that's the only thing they look at when they set their rates. And so they can claim, we have cheap rates, but the only thing they're looking at is today's operation costs to run today. Because you also have to look at what is your current construction needs. Thirty percent of our lines are under six inches. We need to be replacing some of those lines every year. And so we created a construction crew of our own staff with our own equipment to go and replace these lines without hiring contractors because contractors are expensive, especially in oilfield country. You can get a pipeline contractor and you're going to pay oilfield pipeline prices for that project. We can't afford that for our water lines. So we created our own construction team with our own equipment so that we can start replacing these lines with our people out of our current operations. Well, that cost needs to be factored into the rate we charge for our services. Our future capital needs. What are those things that need to be covered in the future? Well, again, generational equity. I'm not going to charge rates today to pay a hundred percent of the cost of that wastewater treatment plant. It doesn't make sense, it's not equitable. But we have to design that plant. I, I have to be spending money today to get it ready to build three years from now or four years from now. And so what do I need to be spending right now to get that ready? That cost needs to be factored in my current revenue requirement, or I'm not going to be able to get the projects done. Fund balance requirements. The council has set a policy that every fund has to have at least twenty-five percent of its operating costs in the bank in a fund, fund balance. Right now, our water department is covered. We have our fund balance requirement maintained. Many utilities fail because they don't think about that and they don't factor it into their rates. So if their fund balance is ten percent of operating cost, they need to start putting money back in there to build that back up. That's part of the revenue requirement that many of them don't think about. And then finally, you have debt service payments that you have to make every year. Right now, we are covering all of our debt service requirements. And so the main components of our current rate structure is current operations, current capital, and future capital needs so that we can respond to those immediate crises as they happen. Finally, with rate structure, how do you build the rates so that it's equitable? There is a demand charge, if you will, that's part of our water rates, and it's tied to your meter size. And it's, it's the base fee, and so the standard residential meter is five eighths. And so I think it's sixteen dollars a month for that meter. Whether you use a gallon or a hundred thousand gallons, that demand charge is sixteen dollars. But the larger your water meter is, the higher that fee goes because, if you go back to the very beginning, people that create the demand should pay for it. And so a two-inch water meter, whether they're using the water or not, is creating a greater demand on our pumps and our elevated storage tanks because it's a two-inch meter. And so their demand charge should be higher than the grandma who has a five-eighth meter. And so when you look at our rate, people look at that, the eight-inch water meter is four or five hundred dollars a month. Well, I think we only have one or two customers that have an eight-inch water meter, and they're large customers. But that fee is high because of the demand they place on our system and the equipment we have to have ready to push the water to them should they need it. And so that is factored into the water rate. It is very low for residential customers that have the small meter because they actually put a very small demand. The other half of that is the consumption charge, and that's based on how many gallons you use. And we have an inclining block rate, which is recommended by the state of Texas. And actually, if you don't have an inclining block rate in Texas, you don't get grants from Texas for your water. Because if it's a flat rate or a declining block rate, because for decades in the past, the more you used, the cheaper it was, that does not promote water conservation. And so the inclining block rate is the more water you use, the more expensive that water gets, is to encourage water conservation. Because the two things that are going to impact people's habits is the conservation plan and the pricing. That's the only thing they're going to respond to. And so our rates have an inclining structure so that the more you use, the more you pay. People don't like that, but that is the equitable way to distribute costs across our utility. And then you can factor in water conservation pricing. We don't currently do that right now, and I wouldn't say that we have a need to. But in twenty-eleven, in the last drought record for Texas, the city of Midland was running out of water. They were literally running out of water. And so they instituted emergency water conservation pricing. And so if I remember correctly, the first five or ten thousand gallons that a residential used was at their current low rate. The minute you went over ten thousand or fifteen thousand gallons, whatever, it was almost twenty dollars a thousand. I mean, they made it crazy expensive because they had to stop water use or they were going to run out of water for everything. And so water conservation pricing can be used in those emergencies to just force people to stop using water until you can get your water supplies fixed. We don't currently have conservation pricing factored into our rates, but it is part of the strategy that is used by municipalities. This next slide, I want to make sure we pay a little bit of attention to because I ran a consumption profile for our residential customers across our utility. And you will typically look at the month of October. If you want to see what's the average use for our community, and you can even apply these numbers for the entire year. What is the average use of our residential customers for the year? Historically, October is the best snapshot for that. And I've got the research to back it up if you want to. But in our community, forty-eight percent of our residential customers, that's one thousand six hundred and seventeen accounts, do not use more than five thousand gallons a month. So almost half of our residential customers never use more than four thousand gallons a month. These are not the customers that are calling you. All right? So speaking in averages, forty-two percent of our customers use fifteen thousand gallons a month or less. So that means ninety percent of our customers, from a residential perspective, do not use more than fifteen thousand gallons a month. These are not the customers that are calling you. Two hundred and forty-two of our accounts, or seven percent of our customers, on average, use between sixteen and twenty-five thousand gallons a month. And it's that twenty-five thousand gallon a month water bill that you're getting calls about right now. Because that is a hundred and sixty, a hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety dollars. That's what their bill is if they're using twenty-five thousand gallons.
I thought it told me five hundred and twenty-six dollars.
That's the three percent. And so we have a hundred and twenty-five customers that on average use more than twenty-five thousand gallons a month. And so they're paying very high water bills. But that's because they're using very high volumes of water. I weekly get calls and there are customers that have used sixty thousand gallons of water. In almost every case, that's a water leak. And so when we talk to those customers, we go check the meter, we help them check their yard, we help find where the leak is, and then we give them an adjustment and drop the cost of that bill down. And the reason we do that is we want them to fix the leak. If they're having to pay me six hundred dollars for the water and then they're having to pay a plumber seven hundred dollars to fix the leak, most of our people can't afford that. So I would rather them find the leak and fix it, and we'll adjust the bill down because it was a leak that was out of their control so that they can solve that problem. Because if we don't do that, that leak will then be two months, and then it'll be three months, and then it'll be four months, and then you've got a residential customer that owes us several thousand dollars that they can't pay, and all of that water is wasted and gone. So we would rather fix the leak sooner and help them with their bill. The new water meter system that you authorized that is being installed right now, these smart meters have leak detection as an active component of that meter. I did a pilot project in another city. We put in twenty smart meters and tested them for three months. And that twenty meters in that three-month period, we found five water leaks within a week of when it started. That's a twenty-meter population. We found five leaks and we found them in a week. And we were able to talk to the customer, find the leak and get it fixed. Rather than right now, you pop a leak, you don't know about it till you get your bill thirty days from now. Then you start looking for the leak. So that means your second month's bill is probably going to be high as well. So now that customer has two months of really high water bills from a leak that happened two months ago, our smart meters will be able to find the fact that there's a leak, send an alarm, and we can help them find that leak and get it fixed faster. That will keep their bills lower. In July of twenty-twenty, this is last month, I ran the profile for our residential customers. Forty percent of our customers use less than five thousand gallons. Another forty percent of our customers use less than fifteen thousand gallons. So eighty percent of our customers are using fifteen thousand gallons or less in the middle and the heat of summer. What that means is that they are not using a lot of discretionary water outside. Your average domestic water needs for a family, that's the water in the house to meet their basic domestic needs, taking baths, brushing teeth, cooking food, drinking water, the basic domestic needs, is usually around six to seven thousand gallons of water a month. So a family that's just doing their basics, they should be using six or seven thousand gallons. If they start using more than that, that means they've got some discretionary water use. Maybe the kids are, my grandkids are living with my wife right now, and so she'll send me pictures and they'll have a little bitty kiddie pool and then buckets of water that they've just filled up so they go outside and play in the water, right? Well, that's discretionary water use and yeah, we're going to pay for it. But we get to decide whether we want to do that or not. But if you start using more than fifteen thousand gallons a month, you're not just taking care of domestic, you're not just doing some discretionary water. You're either on purpose using water outdoors or you've got a leak. And so those are the calls that you're getting. And so last month, twenty percent of our customers use more than twenty-five thousand gallons. Eight percent use more than twenty-six thousand gallons. They're getting very high water bills. And if they're using the water on purpose, that's their choice. And if they'll get a yard meter, that will significantly drop the sewer charges so that we know how much is used indoors and how much is used outdoors. And that's what we'll talk about on the sewer rates. But right now, the people that are calling me every day, the people that are calling you every week, it's not the eighty percent of our customers. It's this three to five to six percent of our customers that are using really high water. They're paying really high water bills. And that's how the rates are structured. If you're going to use high volumes of water, you have to pay for it. Because if we don't, then grandma and grandpa on a fixed income are suddenly subsidizing you so that you can use high water and not pay for it. And we don't want to set up a subsidy program. We recently redid the rates for sewer to go to a total consumption method. We've had that conversation. So just to recap, one of the reasons we did it is because there are no assumptions. Before we made this change, we were using winner averaging, and we were having to basically guess. If you use sixty thousand gallons, how much did you use in the house? How much did you use outside? We don't know. I acknowledge the water you use outside is not flowing down your sewer line. I know that. But I have no way of knowing with certainty how much water you used indoors and how much water you used outdoors. So a second yard meter solves that problem. Then we know. And we're billing with certainty on data that we have confidence in rather than assumptions that we're making. And under the winner averaging, I was getting phone calls regularly for people that were paying significantly higher sewer charges than they were water charges because that winner average number was calculated a year ago when there was a water leak or when something else was going on, and they were paying fifty or sixty dollars a month more for sewer than they should have because we were using assumptions to calculate their sewer bill. I was getting a lot of those phone calls. And so we had a problem, we made an adjustment to the sewer calculation, solved one problem, created another one, right? And so right now, what we're asking residential customers to do is put in a yard meter that provides us with certainty. And the other piece is, we've hired a nationally recognized financial consulting firm to do an in-depth cost of service rate analysis for our water and for our sewer so that we have confidence that the rates and the rate structures are equitable and they make sense. Because there has not been a full rate study for this community in any of the records that I've found. It may have happened in the past, but there hasn't been a rate study. Rates have been adjusted, but there was no study confirmed. And so we've initiated a rate study. Right now, because of COVID, they can't travel, and so we haven't got it completed yet. But once we complete that study, we will come back to you with recommendations on where our water rates should be and how our sewer rates should be calculated. We're asking that you allow us to complete this study so that we have good, hard data and information to base that policy decision on. And so if you choose to make changes in the rates, that's your choice, you're the governing body. But we're asking that you allow us to get this study done. Last thing I want to say about rates is about affordability. Last thing I want to say about rates is about affordability. The American Water Works Association is the industry organization for the United States for water. And the standard that they use for affordability and the standard that's used in grant programs across the nation is called the two percent test. Basically, they look and see what is the average residential water and sewer bill, they're not counting trash, what's the average water and sewer cost for a residential customer, and how is that compared to the median household income that's identified in the U.S. Census? And so if you use that two percent calculation, right now, our average residential customer uses seven thousand gallons a month, that means their water and sewer bill is sixty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents. So if you'll think back to the consumption profile, at least fifty to sixty percent of our customers are paying seventy dollars a month or less for their water and sewer. And so with the AWWA test, that is one and a half percent of median household income for this community. So for our utility as a whole, when you're talking about the entire residential population, according to the standards of the AWWA and every grant program out there, our rates are affordable. We're getting phone calls from those three to five percent of the customers that either have a leak or they're on purpose using a high volume of water. If they have a leak, we have programs in place to help them and we fix that. If they're using it on purpose, we're asking them to pay for it. Because if we don't ask them to pay for it, then everybody else on fixed income is suddenly subsidizing them. And we don't want to create a subsidy system. Talked about the rate study that we're trying to complete. And so as a visual, we've talked about the infrastructure and the problems we have. We've talked about the maintenance and what is required to do on a daily basis. We've talked about the planning that we need to do to get us out into the future. And the support underneath all of that is the rates we charge for service. Because we have to be able to do the infrastructure. We have to be able to maintain operations and we have to plan for what's coming. And that means the rates have to be adequate to support all of that activity. And right now, they are. And this utility is moving forward at a very aggressive pace because the rates support us correcting these problems. So here's a brief list of what we're doing to improve our utility. We're partnering with Madera Valley to look at additional water supplies. Uh, we have a water strategy and a state water plan for a new water treatment plant, should it be necessary, which would include access to funding. Uh, we are conducting wellfields assessments and doing active rehabilitation of our wellfields. Um, we opened bids next week, or September third, for a new SCADA system. SCADA is an acronym that means supervisory control and data acquisition. That's just a fancy way to say we've got wells spread all over that map that we've shown. And I don't have a person at every well watching it every day. But there should be a communication device there that lets me know when that well's working, when that well's not working. It lets me know when the electricity's out phase or when it's in phase. It lets me know when there's a surge. It lets me know what's going on and sends that data back to me. The SCADA system that is used right now was put together in the early two thousands. And it is a SCADA system designed for oilfield production, not water utility. So there's a lot of functionality that we should be getting out of our SCADA system. There's information that I should see every day that I don't see because the SCADA system wasn't designed to tell me that. So we're gonna be installing a brand-new SCADA system designed for a water utility to give us the real-time information we need to manage our system. We're spending money on that right now. That's one of those critical needs. Uh, we're under design for a new wastewater treatment plant. We're reviewing water and sewer rates. Uh, the water meter project is under construction right now. We're implementing a new financial software for better accountability and transparency of our finances so that people can see what's happening with the money to pay us. Um, we're currently wrapping up a master plan for water and wastewater systems that will include a roadmap for the next fifteen years of how we need to handle those lift stations and those small water lines and all of those issues. We've been conducting customer service training with the people that are answering phone calls. And we've been working on the policies to make sure they're up to date. And we're updating standard operating procedures for our field operations so that when there's an issue, our team knows how to fix it and how to fix it right the first time. And so that is the conclusion of my marathon workshop and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Wait, right now, though, I'm wondering. I looked at my bill and I mean that, I did say that two percent, but water was... Compared to water and sewer, there was about a two-dollar difference to a three-to-five-dollar difference. Some of the bills that I've been presented with, two hundred dollars worth of water, over two hundred dollars worth of water, over two hundred dollars worth of sewer. That's not apples to apples because some of that water's going to the yard.
Correct.
You know, but we're still charging them. What they're taking in, they're flushing down. So that's not equitable, that's not fair.
I agree. And so every call that I get, and I had one of those calls today, and I asked him, can you tell me how many gallons you used in the house and how many gallons you used outside? They can't. So that means I have to make a guess of how much they used inside and I have to guess how much they use outside. I can guess for them, but if I don't guess right, then everybody else in town has to pay the difference. And so when we moved to total consumption, we also started recommending a second yard meter. And we've dropped the cost of our yard meter installation significantly. There are still costs associated with it and that's something that people are upset about. For example, if you put an irrigation meter in, our codes require you to put a backflow prevention device on that. And that's not negotiable. Because when you're watering outdoor, there's a possibility you may have some roundup out there. You may have some kind of fertilizer out there. And that can get into that water hose or it can get into the irrigation system. And if there is a back pressure event, it can siphon water out of your irrigation system back into the drinking water line and then send that contaminated water down the street to your neighbor that they're gonna give to their baby. We cannot allow irrigation systems to exist without backflow prevention because it's directly related to the health of the community. And so, yes, there's a cost there. But if they've got an in-ground irrigation system, they probably should have had a backflow prevention device already. And we're finding many of them don't. And so everywhere there's an irrigation system that doesn't have backflow prevention, we're making them install it. Depending on what kind you buy, it's a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars. They don't want to spend that. Well, I don't want you irrigating your yard and potentially putting your neighbor at risk because fertilizer got reintroduced to the drinking water. So I want them to water their yard. I want our yards to be attractive. I don't want this to be a desert. I want us to have attractive yards. I also want to make sure that we don't pull these aquifers down so fast that we now have to come up with thirty or forty million dollars to get more water. So the people that want to water their yard should be able to. They should pay for the water that they use. They should not pay sewer for the water they put on their yard. But I shouldn't have to guess how much water went in the house and how much went on the yard. And so there are rate strategies and there are rate structures that thread the needle of this issue. And that's what we've asked this financial consultant to come in and do. Give us a cost of service rate. Give us a rate that is equitable for all of our customers, both the fixed income and the people that want to water their yard. It needs to be equitable for everybody.
And businesses a little bit.
And businesses and industries. It needs to be equitable for everybody in our utility. And when that rate study is completed, we will bring to you a rate recommendation that satisfies all those issues. But we were creating problems for a portion of our residential customers and so we fixed that problem and created a new problem for, I would suggest, a smaller group of people. But it is still a legitimate problem. They should not be paying two hundred dollars for the sewer bill. They should not be paying that much. But without another meter, I have no data to know where to draw the line. And so we can make assumptions. We can do that. And it just, that then creates problems for other people. So we would like to get the rate study done so that we can bring you a viable recommendation of the rate structure and a cost amount to charge our customers that is equitable across the entire utility. And that's what we're asking to do, is complete that rate study.
I know right now, I'm a lot of people with COVID still holding on and expect no time estimations to when that rate study will be completed.
If we could pick it up and run full speed ahead tomorrow, it would probably take thirty to sixty days to complete it. Um, I don't know that we're able to run full speed right now. So it could be ninety days. Um, in my former life, I did rate studies. I conducted a rate study every year for the utility of the city of Adler. But that was part of my job. I did that. I had time for that. Um, I could do that, but then there's a whole bunch of other stuff that I wouldn't be doing right now as well. And so that's why we tried to bring in a consultant to help us get this done and get done according to industry standards.
So God willing, hopefully by the first of the year, things go.
I think that's a realistic target. And we're coming out of summer. So hopefully, all of this high water consumption's gonna stop and buy us the time till at least next spring. But if we can have the study done by the end of the calendar year, we can then adopt and implement the rates before we get into next year's watering season.
In the meantime, uh, as you may recall, we do have a new yard meter program which is below cost for the city. Um, and we have not had a lot of people participate in that. I think six have signed up?
No, uh, we've probably over fifteen.
Okay.
That's more than the last time I checked. But, uh, still, that's a very small proportion of the community. We would encourage people to come in, ask questions, call us on the phone, give the information on that. And we, uh, the council approved those greatly reduced rates to encourage people to do it. But we still haven't seen a lot of people doing it for that.
It has to be done by professional plumbers, plumbers or?
So we do the tap ourselves. Um, and if they have a homestead, they can actually do the backflow themselves as long as it passes, um, all the inspections. Um, but the backflow is on their side of the meter and therefore it's their responsibility. The city can have a certified backflow tester on staff so that the city performs the test. Right now, we don't have anyone that has that certification.
Who's doing the testing, sir?
Local plumbers.
Local plumbers.
And then is that the only one? Were you just him or can we? As long as it's a licensed plumber?
They have to have the, they have to have the backflow certification from the state of Texas.
Oh, okay.
Anybody with that certification can do the test. They don't have to be local, they don't have to be from here.
Okay.
Uh, but they have to have that certification from the state. Um, I would love to be able to take one of our guys and get them certified in that. But we gotta start the process because it takes time to go through the classes and get the certifications. At that point, we can do the testing ourselves and save the citizens the money. But we don't have a license.
How often do you do that test? Once a year?
Once a year.
Okay. Wouldn't that be something that, is that something that you're all looking at for somebody in the future to? If we're gonna be installing yard meters, uh, and if it picks up for more people, then it's gonna be feasible for somebody locally, I mean, you know, not locally, but from the city employee to be able to be certified to do it?
And anyone who is in the community who wants to go get certified and miss qualifications, we would encourage them. Let us know that you got the certification because we want to know. Because there's very few people right now that have the license. And so you don't have a lot of choices right now who's gonna do it for you. And some of that's dropping the prices up because there's not enough.
Yeah, and that's supply and demand. Yeah, exactly.
Back in the, in the middle nineties, when I got on board with the city, I was invited by then-mayor Doc Stafford and Mayor Potem Delvia Meadows to accompany them to go ask the Water Development Board for that, for a nine-million-dollar grant for the South Russian Field. So we took all our books and stuff, our water rates, sewer rates, and they said, there is no way we're gonna lend you any money. And I go, why? Because you couldn't afford to pay it back. You don't charge enough on your water and sewer rates to pay back a loan of nine million dollars. So we had to come back home with our tails stuck to our legs and we gradually started raising water and sewer rates. So you wouldn't hit them all at the same time. Because back then, we were used to just letting it run, you know? We just, water would just run and just kiss me with water hoses.
Down the street.
We were used to cheap water. So finally, we had to raise our water rates and we got to the point then where we paid that loan. So we went back and asked for it and they gave it to us. It's just that it's our culture. We used to throw in water or we think water is cheap and easy to get to or whatever and wash our cars and whatever. We had a city council member, maybe I shouldn't say this, I lost it anyway. He would complain to the mayor every month, my water bill is so much and so much and so much. And finally, Doc Stafford took pictures. He would wash his car, his wife's car, a police car that he was a reserve, almost every day. So she got the pictures and said, look, I was saying, it's like, look, this is where your water's going to. Never complained again.
I took a phone call, actually, the lady came into my office. And she's in her eighties. This is her last one. And she came into my office crying because she had used fifty thousand gallons of water. And she had, I think it was a four-hundred-dollar water bill. And she's in her eighties on fixed income. She has no family in this community. She is completely alone. She said, the only thing I have is my rose bushes. I think it's a peach tree. And so every day, she goes out and she waters those rose bushes in that tree. But what she does is she puts a garden hose, she turns the water on, she goes back in the house and just lets it run. And I started asking her, I said, do you have any soaker hoses? You can keep those bushes alive for way less than fifty thousand gallons of water. But she didn't know anything about soaker hoses. She didn't have anybody that she could call to help her set that up. So I started trying to call around and see, are there any churches that have a men's group? Are there any nonprofit groups that can go help her set up a soaker hose system for thirty, forty bucks? She can keep her rose bushes alive and not use fifty thousand gallons of water. And I didn't find a group out there that would do that. She's the only one that's talked to me, but I can promise she's not the only one in the community that that's true. And so there are people that, all they have is their rose bushes. And they just want to keep their rose bushes alive, but they can't pay four hundred dollars a month in water bills. I agree, they can't pay four hundred dollars a month. There's a better way to keep them alive than what she's doing. But as a municipality, we cannot go on her side of the meter and install stuff for her. We can't do it as a municipality, we're not allowed to. She can't afford to hire a plumber to do it. But there should be a group in this community that can go help her put some soaker hoses into her rose bushes. But she didn't know them and I couldn't find them. So there are very real stories of people in our community that are hurting, that need help. And it's an opportunity for our community to step up and help these people that are less fortunate. The city by law cannot do it, so I was trying to find someone that could or that would, um, and that needs solicitors.
But, there are people right now, single parents, the elderly, people who have fixed incomes, and they're hurting. But, we have to educate them and say, "You know what? Don't use the water. I'm sorry, but..."
As, as one of my final thoughts, I would just recommend, uh, as you get those calls, please, you know, pass them off to us, give us the details, give us the contact information. And, to our citizens out there, regardless of the case, if they think that there's a discrepancy, or if they think that there's something wrong with the, the billing, uh, you know, come talk to us. Howdy spends an awful lot of his time dealing with-
With customers.
He, he's got a stack, but he does sit down with them, and he looks at it. Doesn't mean the answer's gonna be in the citizen's favor. It, it doesn't mean that we're going to necessarily be able to do something, but we are definitely dedicating the time and manpower to look into that. Uh, you know, we're not just sending them on the way and saying, "Well, you're out, you're out of luck." Uh, that's not what we do, that's not our customer service approach.
We're getting that, we're getting that part of the story, that they come to pay, and I'm sorry, yeah, there's no option other than that. I've heard it several times.
Well, and, they, they need to know that they can ask, uh, consumer-driven questions. They can ask, "Can I go over my bill with somebody?" Um, and whether that's Ms. Emma, whether that's Howdy, uh, or, you know, anybody on staff that's familiar with it, they, they need to ask that question, because yes, they do need to pay the bill. And the part of the reason we do that is because if it doesn't, if we don't put it in our system as paid or being on a payment plan, um, then they go on a shut-off list, and that's not what we want. Um, and so, if they don't wanna pay the full bill, uh, we ask that our, our customers ask to be on an installment plan, and say, "Okay, can I pay, you know, a certain amount, and we'll work it out, we'll do the contract." And in the meantime, we can be investigating what is going on. You know, we go out and we do service checks on the meter. Uh, our, our customer service reps stay quite busy doing that. Um, you know, we review the account, we review it against previous years. Uh, we, we do a lot of due diligence to try to find out what the problem is, what's causing it, why they're in the situation they're in. Uh, and, and there are times where we come up with the answer ultimately that, "Well, we know this much water went through, we don't know how much went back to the sewer. This is what we know, this is what we can act on." And then, you know, it is a further education of, "Okay, do we have a toilet that's running? Did we fill the pool and forget that, that we filled it that night? You know, were our kids out playing in the, in the spring breeze?" You know, that, that's an education, and it's not just take, it's this is everybody. I mean, as Howdy mentioned during his presentation, we've only got three percent of fresh water, you know, in the entire earth, and everybody uses water, you know, extraneous stuff. And, and so, it, it's an education thing that we need to help people know how they're using their water, and how to track it, how to be good consumers. Um, because it, it's not just the city, it's not just them, it's both of us working together. One of the things that the community engagement team is working on is coming up with consumer, consumption, uh, consumption, uh, water saving tips. And I, I think they're about ready to get those published, uh, they've been working on those. And we'll put those out on Facebook, we'll put them on the face, on the webpage. And they're just small tips of things to make us more conscious as a community of how we are individually using our water. Now, even then, even with our best intentions, there's still gonna be people who are gonna wash their car. They, they love their car, they love their Camaro, if I had a Camaro, I'd love it too. Uh, you know, but whatever it is that they're doing, there's some people that are just going to do it. In, in a similar example, we, we had an elderly, uh, customer come in and say, "I'll be on a payment plan until I die, I'm not gonna pay it, but I'm gonna use all this much water as I want." Well, that's a pretty good assessment of where you're at, uh, and if you're elderly, I guess you can, you can do that. And certainly, we're not encouraging that. What we would rather see is that someone be responsible with how they're using the water, that they're being responsible in paying their bills, and that we, as a provider, are being responsive in how we're providing that service. But, we're gonna come across all kinds, we're gonna try to educate, um, but when it all comes down to it, we're, we're not gonna satisfy all groups all the time. But, we are asking for some time to come up with what should be our rates, and we are implementing a lot of steps, as you saw on that, that second last page. We're, we're doing an awful lot at this time to make sure that our internal processes are being taken care of, that our meters are reporting it, uh, back to City Hall, so that we're not estimating reads. I, I've heard a rumor out in the community that our meters are broken. That's inaccurate. Uh, it's not that our, our meters are not registering it, it's that our drive-by system, the radios do not pick it up. And so, that means that we either have to get out and manually read it, uh, and find all the black whales and the snakes and everything else that's living in that hole, or we're having to estimate. We try to avoid estimating, but we do it. Uh, you know, we can only count the accessibility. We're trying to get away from that. It's not that water's not going through your meter, and it's not that it's not, uh, reading it correctly, it's just we're not getting that data back. And so, that's part of the meter project that we're undertaking, is that we should be able to get that back, and we'll actually free up more time to do one-on-one customer service, because we won't be spending that time reading meters. Additionally, there will be some, some perks such as that leak detection. Uh, you know, we're going to have to be very proactive in how our customer service reps react, um, to those leaks, because we'll now have that data telling us on an hourly basis that something's going on. And so, we need to proactively go out, approach our customers, um, and we would encourage customers, I think there will be a customer portal, where they can sign up, you know, use- See their own consumption, track their own consumption, be good consumers. And so, there's a lot that we're trying to get in place. Unfortunately, it's all at the same time, and we, we, you know, we're, we're still providing the service, and we're doing the best we can, I would feel that we're providing good service, um, but there's improvements to come, and we ask that people stick with us while we're working through this.
When Howdy mentioned about, uh, the city going through their water shortage, my daughter was living there at the time, and she said, "At the complex, apartment complex where she was staying, they used to water with the city water, but then they, they, they drilled their own little water well, so that's how they would drill, I mean, water, the, the water, the grass at the complex." But, but, most of the citizens were doing the same thing, they were drilling their own water wells. It got to the point where their revenues were so low, their water revenues dropped so low, that they had to make some changes.
Yeah, cause there's still a system to take care of-
Correct.
-what the people are using their water.
Correct. Throughout the twenty eleven, my last community, we got down to, we had three lakes that we pulled out of, and I think it was seventeen percent capacity was left in those three lakes.
Which lakes?
Ivy, and Vanom, and Hubbard. And, when you're serving water to a hundred and twenty thousand people, you've got seventeen percent of your water left, it makes you nervous. And, as Uncle Murphy would have it from Murphy's Law, we spent two hundred million dollars on water supplies, and as soon as we finished construction, it rained and filled up all the place.
You prayed too much.
That's it, just-
Prayed too hard.
Our rain dance was too effective.
We have a couple here, but do y'all wanna share some of the lists tonight?
Yeah, thank you. Our bill was five twenty-five.
You can come to the podium, if you want to, please.
Do you want?
Please, just say your name, please. They can't see you, but they can hear you.
Okay, Lindsay Vasquez. Um, our bill was five twenty-five. Our water usage was about two fifty, so we paid about two fifty for sewer. Um, and after watching all this, I understand more, I really do. But, I called, and I was hung up on twice. So, I came down to the city, and she was kind enough to serve me, cause I came from twelve, like twelve-ten, cause my daughter's homeschooling, so we came during her lunch break. You can't hardly see, cause it's like a, I don't know what's there, it's like a tent, so you can't even see the person you're talking to. And I was just told, "Yeah, sorry, that's, that's the new order that's satisfied, you have to pay the bill." So, I guess, after watching all this, and, and learning more, my question is, where is the education to the citizens? You know, like, I wasn't offered a meter, I wasn't offered, "Hey, you know, you need to have this done and do this." And that's kind of upsetting, cause five hundred and twenty-five dollars is a lot of money. It's, it's taking food off the table, not just for us, but for neighbors. And it's upsetting, because as, I was never made aware that your rates are gonna go up, watch your water. I mean, did I miss that?
We advertised it pretty aggressively.
Did you? So, like, I never received anything in the mail that, you know, you're gonna start paying. I knew I was gonna pay more for water, but I didn't know my sewer was gonna be the same price as my water, which seems completely unfair, cause we water our grass, we let the kids play in the hose, you know, fun stuff for summer, cause they're at home, they're stuffed, they're not going anywhere, COVID. So, I think I speak for a lot of citizens. It would be nice to know, "Okay, you have sixty days, or you have ninety days, or we're gonna do this in a hundred and twenty days." So, we kinda know, cause it's money out of our pocket and off our table, just to say, "Well, you know, we, we're gonna get it done as fast as we can, and I know your hands are tied, because these people aren't coming out and doing the study." But, I think it would be nice to maybe say, "Let's keep these rates up for ninety days, and if we still don't have anybody available, let's drop it for two months." Or, "Let's do it for a hundred days, and if, you know, we still can't get anybody, let's give these people a rate, cause it's too much, it's expensive." So, now, what we're gonna, we're gonna stop watering our grass, and it's gonna get ugly, but that's the price. We can, we can help do that, that's okay. I just wanna be charged fairly, and I don't think it's fair. And I just wanna put that on the record. Eighteen oh one, South Park. And so, see, I didn't know, maybe I do have a leak, so I had called, you know, like, maybe the meter's old, cause we just moved here in November, maybe the lines are bad, but there was no help. It was just, "Sorry, that's what we're doing now." It, it's upsetting.
Quite for yourself.
So, but I really appreciate this, cause I really did learn a lot.
There is, um, I don't know if our current software will do it, uh, but we're upgrading to a new financial software. I know most electrical providers will offer average billing, and so, they'll, they'll look back at some of your average consumption patterns and spark, so you'll pay less in the summer, but pay more in the winter, so that it kinda balances things out. That is a billing strategy. It doesn't, it doesn't change the rates, it changed how the bill is paid over time.
But, the billing is what we're following.
I, I don't know if, I'll have to look and see if our software has that option right now. I know the new software that we're moving to does, uh, but that might be a fairly quick option that we could put on the table, if, if that is available.
Yeah, and, and answering something that the young lady said, cause, uh, cause I've gotten some phone calls, you know, that people, people, people are meant to be social, but when you can't see who you're talking to on the other side of the glass-
Well, and some of that is because that was set up as the municipal court, and there was a security issue, but when COVID hit, we took the, from being behind the counter here where it's open-
Mm-hmm.
-and we put them behind the glass to, to help solve the COVID issue, but that window was created through municipal court-
Oh.
-because we had people coming in mad, want to pay their ticket, and then start threatening whoever was on the other side of the glass. So, that film also serves as ballistic protection, to protect the municipal court clerks. And so, that's why it's tenet, it wasn't done to be a utility payment window, but when COVID hit, we stopped serving here where it's open air, and did it there, and so, yeah, the, the tenet glass is not convenient for utility customer service at all.
And, and that's some, some of the questions that I've had to answer, and that's why I was, and I've been meaning to ask, and I keep forgetting, but now she brought it up, because-
Thank you for being here, it's-
Do we, um, like the supermarkets are doing in Walmart, they put a particular plastic glass instead of an open area at the supermarkets of Walmart, and we come in with our face masks on and see their face and discuss with people.
We'll look at, cause I don't even know if we're using our drive-through for in-person payments. The drive-through right now is the automated kiosk. We may see if we can go back to payments through the drive-through, cause it is a clear glass that you can see, and they don't have to get out of the cars to do that. We'll look and see if we can move back to that direction as well.
Well, thank you for coming to take us. Thanks for coming in and sharing your thoughts.
And we'll make it a lot better. It'll take time, but we're, we're in the, moving on.
I have a quick question, sir. Since you mentioned your yard meter, I'd like to get one, because I wanna water my yard. It's, you know, it's cold.
Yes, sir.
She stays at home, it's important for me to be, to be known at work that she is doing, but she likes to be guarded. It takes water to guard it. When I do get a meter, I'm gonna look into it, and I find out how much usage I, I really use inside of the house, and I get compensated for what I spend, or for the amount of money that you charge me for sewer?
I don't currently have a policy that would allow me to do that right now, and so, I only have the authority to do what the policy allows. Uh, so, under current policy, I could go back, but if the policy was adopted, then we can do whatever the policy says.
Yeah, this, uh, sir, you said it best, we learned from our mistakes, and I made the mistake in watering the yard.
It, it shouldn't be a mistake.
Five hundred and thirty dollars in a month, and it's a lot of money.
It's a lot.
And I wish I would have known-
Yes, sir.
-about the yard here, like she said.
I think that's a hard fact.
They're supposed to be telling people about that, and the fact that they didn't, I'm, I'm very sorry, that was your experience, and we're gonna go back and-
Yes, sir.
Have that conversation.
And I'm gonna look into getting a yard here, because, uh, it sounds to me like you guys like this, and I can see why.
And, from our cost, it's two fifty for the meter, I think there's seventy-five dollars for the inspection. So, total cost, I think, is three twenty-five is what you pay the city. And we installed the meter and everything's ready to go. Um, if it's homesteaded, and you own the property, or it's homesteaded, then you can do the plumbing work yourself, and it can be as simple as, from the meter, you run in a hose bib. That hose bib doesn't even require a backflow device, if it's just a simple hose bib with a faucet up in the air, then you can use water hose and do whatever you need to, and the cost is very low.
To the percent.
Yeah.
So, the backflow prevention is for water sprinkler systems, not just a-
For your sprinkler system?
You have a spigot, you don't have to have a backflow.
Cause as it stands right now for your house, if you've got a spigot on the side of your house-
Mm-hmm.
-that the water hose connects to, and you just run the little tractor sprinkling, there's no backflow prevention device there, because it's going through your house.
Cool, but I, I, I was thinking we'd have to put a backflow, no matter what.
No, if, and, and if they're homesteaded, they can put that in themselves, they don't have to hire a plumber, they don't have to do any of that stuff, if they're homesteaded, they can do their own work. And if it's our yard meter, you run in a short stretch of lawn and put a hose bib in the air, you're not talking hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of dollars, and it solves the problem. It can be done.
For, for the public listening in, it does need to be an anti-siphon post-it, because that has its own air brake-
Yeah, oh, okay.
-in the head, it has this, it does have an entry, and it has an air brake in there. And so, it needs to be an anti-siphon post-it, if, if that's what you're doing.
And could they put that on a payment plan, the installation of a seven one meter?
Yeah, and so, we, we let them pay it out over three months if they want to. Most everybody so far has just paid to get it front, but we offer, they can pay it out over three months.
Where do you, uh, where do you apply for it?
Here.
Just come in.
It, it, it starts with our permits clerk, and actually, next week, she's moving upstairs. But, come to City Hall, we can get you the application, start the process. Uh, we've been getting, from application to the meter in the ground, it's been taking about seven days, uh, but then, we have to wait for their plumbing to be inspected, so whatever plumbing work they have gets done, and then we go inspect it, and if it passes inspection, we connect it and they're offering them.
So, what does the inspection, uh, according to?
The plumbing inspections are done by our staff.
Oh, okay.
We don't have a licensed backflow tester right now.
If you have a backflow tester, you gotta have a plumber to install it and-
Education, education, communication, et cetera. And one of the bullet points was, we're actively doing customer service training, it's very clear we need to do some more.
We do apologize that you got hung up on, and that they didn't have better answers for you, and we will be addressing that.
Any more discussion? I don't have a cabinet, but we are adjourned. I'm just.
The time is?
How many minutes?
Seven forty-two P M.